Okay, it's just after five o'clock. We do appear to have a quorum, so I will call this meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to order Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If the board would please call the roll.
Audrey Lankala. Balthazar Day and Santana. Barbara Harrington McKinney. Carolyn McAndrews.
Here.
Christopher McHale.
Uh, here.
Eric Paulson.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Nikki Vander Mullen. Randy Udow.
Here.
Thomas Wilson.
Here. All right, thank you, Sharon. We do have a quorum, so we are in order. Um, if our tech facilitator, would please proceed with our standard virtual meetings opening statement?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video for purposes of quorum and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is Alders Committee and staff, have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Also, please continue to use the raised hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak the day you entered in Zoom must match the day you entered in registration. You will remain muted upon until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Thank you. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Sherry. All right, um, approval of minutes from our October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, assuming all board members have had a chance to review those, if they so chose, is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Chris. Is there a second? Thank you, Carolyn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes from the October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose no? Any extensions? Seeing none, this should be unanimous. Thank you. Um, do we have any registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda? I don't think we do. Thank you. Um, are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals for members of the board? Seeing none, we'll get right into our first agenda item, Legisstar six-six-eight-nine-eight, Complete Green Streets.
All right. Hello, everyone. I think you all know me by now. Renee Callaway, Pedestrian and Bicycle Administrator in Traffic Engineering. Um, it's gonna be kind of brief. I was just here, uh, you may remember, two weeks ago. Um, but I did want to kind of just go over some of things. Okay, wow, something weird is definitely going on with my Zoom there, but I think I can overcome it. Okay, I think everything is working. I don't know what was going on. They update Zoom and then it's as if you've never used it before. Um, so I just wanted to go over kind of, some of this will be reviewed, some of it, you know, a lot of it is just kind of getting flushed out a little bit. But I just wanted to go over, um, we're starting to really dig into putting the guide together, so I wanted to go over a few things with you, um, in case you have any additional feedback. Um, you know, show a couple new things, um, and then just go over our timeline for the project. Um, first, just this is a huge review for many of you who've sat through quite a few of these, but really, we're working on this guide, um, trying to ensure that it reflects values and priorities, which our streets have not always done. Um, so we really want to use this guide to help us do that. Um, really, you know, we have such a huge focus on safety now with Vision Zero. Um, really thinking about how to make our streets equitable, something that we heard a lot during the engagement, um, and we've talked about with you. And then this idea of trying to bring in resiliency and that kind of green infrastructure and tree part, and how do you fit that into kind of the modal networks and all the things that go into a street? So trying to have a framework that brings that in better and ensures we're making the right investments that make sense and really move our city towards, um, its goals. So also, as, um, you know, a lot of times with projects, if you've come to some transportation committee meetings, you'll see there's always these trade-offs, um, in a lot of our projects. We have kind of a constrained right of way, and we want to have a fair process that really gets us to those values. Um, and make sure that our, we have equitable street outcomes. Um, some of you may or may not remember, but we do have a resolution that was approved in two thousand and nine for complete streets directing staff um, to undertake it. So this is a framework that really helps implicitly with staff, um, with elected officials, with public kind of understanding how that will happen. And then I really want to bring up that this is a living document. It's not something that's static. It will be added to. It will be updated. Many cities are, you know, down the road, they're on maybe a fifth revision, and so I think we don't have to think of this as something that's completely done. This is step one in the process. So just to review, for those of you who've been here, we has those values. We have a modal hierarchy. We have some overlays, um, equity, one, one around, um, transit and biking. We have, uh, some decision-making for green infrastructure, for trees. We have those eleven street types that we've seen before, and we have design parameters that all go into the guide. Um, so just running through how it will all work, um, and, you know, trying to kind of find ways to make people understand a somewhat complicated process. What values are really the starting point for everything, that modal hierarchy and what we heard from the community about putting people first, sustainability, community, and equity. Um, from there, you have those eleven street types that we've talked about, and these overlays, the six overlays, um, equity, transit, bike, tree, green infrastructure, and then just a recognition that, um, anything on the national highway system, um, you know, requires that collaboration with the DOT as well as truck routes, um, have some certain needs. So those are overlays. So those are the kind of starting points for a project. You would look to see what street type it is and what are the overlays that would impact the design. You would look at the design priorities and each street type, um, has those laid out for the different zones. And you would see, what do you need to do to allocate that street zone space? What is the space that you have, um, that you need? And if it doesn't all work out perfectly the first time, you would go back and look at those priorities to determine what trade-offs you would need to make, ultimately leading to, um, a design. So that's kind of the goal, is that you would have all these steps that would help you walk through a project. It would help you kind of understand what's gonna happen with the project to get to, um, streets that are centered in those values and hierarchies. So just walk through this quick, um, your street types first. These are the eleven that we've been talking about. Those haven't changed, and those are still that starting point based on context. And that is, as mentioned here, aspirational. They may not look like that today, but this is where we want them, this is what we want them to look like. Each of those have these different zones, um, one for walking, and that can be just purely walking. It also could be a shared use path in some types of streets. You have your travelway, which is gonna be different types of motion, transit, motor vehicles, and often the bikes will actually be in the travelway, save if it's a protected bike lane versus a shared use path. And then you have the flex zone, which is kind of more the things that are stationary, transit stations, parking, trees, green infrastructure, those are in the flex zone. Um, and for each street type, all eleven of those, each of those street zones has a priority assigned to it. Um, and some sort of example information to have you kind of understand what those zones are and what you might see typically within them. So this is just an urban avenue, um, think, uh, kind of Upper East Washington, closer to the Capitol, um, Park Street. Um, and this kind of lays out for that street type. Um, kind of what, a, a design speed would be what the different priorities are to help you kind of understand that starting point. Um, then there are these overlays, um, which is kind of a, I don't know, I feel like it's kind of a nerdy word, but it's, you would lay that over the map, maybe it's a super nerdy way to describe it, and then you would see, oh, is it an equity area? Is it transit? Which of these things is also on that map? Tom didn't think I was too nerdy, luckily. Um, so here they are. They also, um, really impact decision-making and the priority of the elements. Um, and each one has kind of a different, uh, way that you would use it. So equity priority areas, these are starting out, as I mentioned, our neighborhood resource teams, but these will be added to and expanded. Um, there's some work going on that the data team is doing, so these would grow with that. So these would be a starting point. And, um, later, for those of you who were here two weeks ago, there's a checklist. And for any equity priority area, there's gonna be some additional data gathering, some additional process steps to ensure that we are really engaging with those neighborhoods and ensuring that the streets there, um, are going to look um, and have the features of streets in other neighborhoods. So really trying to ensure that we're bringing them up to be safer, to have more of those features, speed management, green infrastructure, trees, that we're really taking a hard look and ensuring that we are building streets the right way for every neighborhood. Then we have the Transit and Bike Network, um, which is ensuring that we're making those critical links, um, for transit. Um, that would be streets that have that fifteen-minute service on weekdays, mid-days, and that All Ages and Ability Bike Network. This would be those critical streets that can ensure that we connect the entire city to those, um, important destinations for everyone, regardless of their sort of comfort level at biking. So as we say, the All Ages and Abilities Network. We have Tree Canopy. Um, we would be using some work that was done with the Urban Forestry Task Force Report, um, looking at existing tree canopy and using this website called Tree Equity Score, um, to really determine, um, where are our highest priority areas where we really need to grow that canopy. There's this green infrastructure priority chart. Um, I put in this map on the left-hand side because it starts with figuring out what reach shed you are, which is the strangest word ever, but it is a huge part of our city, um, which is that whole map area. Um, and those are kind of priority areas that have been set, um, by others. And so you would follow this decision matrix to determine, is this a good location, um, to really make a difference with our distributed green infrastructure, where it is going to have those sort of stormwater and water quality improvement solutions, um, that makes sense. Um, and for places that are not considered for that, there would be other options. So here is kind of the whole thing, um, again. And I think the big thing is, is when you're making those trade-offs, always making sure the values, those are always kind of be front and center for all decision-making and trade-offs. Um, these are street zone allocation charts, um, that help people, you know, really thinking about each of those zones for each type of a street and kind of what is our sort of minimum, maximum, preferred, typical, it varies a little bit. Um, each of those can be a little bit tricky to kind of figure out, but really trying to ensure that we're right sizing our streets, that we're making them safe, and that we're building the kind of streets that we want. Um, so these are really just to help with that design work. Um, and then next, few things to go through is, this is, um, there'll be a section in the guide that is, you know, ours isn't a full design guide. Some cities build their own design guides, but what we're saying is we're going to put in references to the street design guides that we have been using and that we want people to be using, um, as they're building out our streets. Um, and really make that stunt in front of her and be clear, like, we're using these sort of Nacto Urban Street Design Guides that, uh, many of you have heard us talk about many times as we've been working on our projects. Also, there's some additional, there's an additional green infrastructure report. It has some additional decision-making tools. Um, here's a few, uh, like, for permeable pavement decision-making, for rain garden decision-making. Um, and then just a pretty wide array of different types of DJI and the type of street that you would consider. Is it appropriate? Might it work? Or is it not the kind of space that would work for that type of DJI? And I hope that you're not gonna ask me too many DJI questions because I've learned a bit, but not enough to answer detailed questions. Um, but there is a very large document that was compiled with best practices, you know, with different kinds of techniques that is on the website. It has lots of large maps to really kind of help us get at making informed decisions that will really have the benefits, um, that we need to have for the future. And then this kind of came up at the Board of Public Works when I was at their last meeting is, you know, starting to have some other charts to really help with decision-making. And I think this is an area where we can see a lot of additions in the future. Um, but this is kind of a similar chart, um, around some speed management and what types of streets should you be looking at, what types of things should you be looking at for speed management on different types of street? To kind of help people as they think about how to design a street for the speed that we want it to be. Um, and so I think this is an area where we could really have some additional appendixes in the guide as we move forward. Um, and then I mentioned last time there'll be a project checklist, which is kind of an implementation tool that would go along with a project. It would get filled out. It would go into Legisstar. Um, it would go on the project website, and it would help committees, elected officials, the public kind of understand, um, uh, individual project and those elements related to complete and green streets. So street type, um, the different, you know, design items that would go in, is it on one of those overlays? All of that would go into that checklist. Um, but also that checklist, over time, you would be able to see progress, um, and see if we're really aligning our projects. Um, and we could kind of start to use it to track improvements to our, um, Transit and Bike Network. We could see where we're adding the green infrastructure trees. Um, and I also think it can be an important tool with Vision Zero and the reporting that we will do for that. And it would just be a place where we could have all of that information, also not just for that one time with a project, but for the long run, as we look to see if this is working, as we look to see what we might want to change or update, that could help with that piece. And then our timeline, um, we are working on our draft guide, putting all of the pieces together now, um, with an intention to introduce it um, on December sixth, and then begin going through the approval process with committees, um, with the idea of going back, hopefully then in January, um, to the Common Council to discuss for approval. And that is it for tonight. Questions and comments? I don't know if anyone registered.
We didn't have any registrants. Um, we did have the one email submitted that was sent out to everyone, so hopefully we've all had a chance to see that. Um, any questions for Renee? Could probably just open up comments and discussion at the same time here. Go ahead, Chris.
Um, thanks for the update, Renee. Um, I am wondering one thing. Um, so one of the, the, the reasons Transportation Commission seems to be really looking forward to the design guide is that, you know, we often wrestle with like, on new streets, especially like new residential streets, this trade-off between road width and, and bike lanes and parking. And you showed tables last time, and then this time you mentioned just referring to other design guidance. Do you think that there's gonna be enough in there to sort of point engineering in the right direction on questions like that?
Yeah, so I think, you know, our basic tables would be for a new development be mostly what you would need because it would have sort of our preferred street widths, our preferred right-of-ways, um, and then obviously particularly for some streets, right, then you would use those design guides to say, okay, this, like, I'm gonna look for, you know, the bike facility, or I can see that this is gonna, you know, be a transit route, um, and it looks like it would have this level of service. And so you would have those guides to kind of back up what those final things would look like, but our own charts would be enough to set the basic parameters, and then there would be the, kind of looking at some of the, the finer details to, to get to that final, like, bike facility or transit facility design. Does that?
Awesome. Yeah, thanks.
All right, any further questions? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just to, um, I guess take off of Chris's question. Um, one of the things that I've seen to be the biggest challenge with that work, with those new subdivisions, is around how much on-street parking should we accommodate? So I know that's kind of covered in the flex zone area. Does that, does the chart that we will have, um, does it have good guidance, sufficient guidance to be able to say, here's how we're gonna calculate sort of anticipated on-street parking needs, and then that would also then determine the right of way?
Yeah, so that's something we've been talking about a lot because obviously different kinds of developments, uh, multifamily versus single family, which has certain requirements for off-street spaces are really, um, important. So we're kind of still talking that out and, um, talking to developers to kind of feel that out, but I think the idea is that we want to skinny up the streets, um, and we want to ensure that we're, you know, those streets don't, aren't these like huge wide open areas, and I think that we're going to be able to, to hit on that.
Awesome. It looks like Tom's got his hand up. I'll just say I would definitely love to see whatever as specific a language and guidance we can put in here, just to really back up those conversations for, of staff are having with developers and make sure that we're not building those overly wide streets that we gotta come back in twenty years and put speed bumps in and try and fix, so. Awesome.
Yeah, I, I think I would like to just echo Renee's, um, you know, having parking on both sides of the street on any new development that already has off-street parking for, for vehicles, you know, is kind of overkill, and so we, we want to really move um, towards not providing that, or if we provide it, uh, maybe just doing a, a parking, a couple of parking bays per block, so that it's, people can say, well, there's some, there's some on-street parking for visitors, but it doesn't end up being this, um, thing. And so I don't know if the tables were like that, but we'll try and put that into the narrative, I think.
Thanks, Tom. Um, Alder Harington, excuse me, Alder Harington McKinney, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you very much. Um, uh, thank you. Yes, also, I want to thank you for the presentation. And you mentioned, um, skinny streets. And, um, since being on the Transportation Boards and Commission, I've really been paying, um, attention to such streets. I know there's a place on Ordana that's really, um, very skinny, and I'm more concerned about bikers and cars and how all that is coming together. And so what I hear you saying is that this is a living document, and that we will be going through those processes and looking at when you call skinny streets, how they're lining up with, uh, all modes of transportation. Is, am I correct with that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the thing is, is that, you know, we want them to support slow travel. Um, and we know that wider streets don't do that, but we also know that some streets are critical bike network or transit networks, all those things. You know, you need to look at them at the individual level. Um, and, but that, you know, you really need to ensure that you're designing for the, the desired safe speed first. Um, and then seeing how you fit that in, um, to ensure the safety for all modes, um, you know, with walking, people taking transit and biking being very critical to, to the project. Does that? Yeah. Okay.
Great, thank you. Um, Alder Paulson, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Uh, sure, I just wanted to kind of get a sense for, um, to sort of put it into practical terms, like, you know, what are folks in the city gonna see? Um, and let's maybe, or maybe ask it two ways. One, you know, we've got, I think Atwood is gonna be maybe one of the biggest reconstructions that we've got coming up, and I'm wondering, would the Atwood reconstruction plan that we've got now have changed much under these guidelines? And then maybe to ask it another way, are there any other streets that are kind of at that sort of, you know, importance of Atwood, you know, not quite East Wash, but it's not like, you know, Venus Way out here, uh, way out in the suburb here, so the, these kind of medium um, streets that we all have driven on at some point in the past month, but, um,
Yeah.
You know, it's a, it's a street that we all kind of know where it is. Like, where are we gonna start seeing some of these changes that are, um, that are gonna affect, that people are gonna notice?
Sure. I mean, you know, Atwood, obviously it has its design done and is really like gearing up to go next year, but I think, you know, what you see there with, um, space, a protected space for biking, um, you know, in some places, some space for walking. I mean, that's really where we're, you know, repurposing some, uh, motor vehicle space for other users, and we're really also trying to look at the crossings. I mean, that is very much, um, in line with that. I haven't thought as much about the green part, um, with that, but I know, you know, like, that the, sort of the multimodal, um, trade-offs there, um, are very in line with it. Um, I think there's a project, um, Alder Figurar Coles here, like Hammersley. I think we were really thinking a lot about this model when we did the design for that street, which is also planned for construction next year, um, where we really looked at the trade-off of trees versus parking. Um, and how can we accommodate safer walking and biking? And that was a super constrained area there. Um, and I think it falls very much in line with kind of the community connector street type. Um, and the discussions that we had were very much in, in line with this, this project.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
I, I think one thing, though, is that, um, while I think Atwood and Hammersley are consistent with complete streets, it was kind of difficult to get there. You know, it was difficult to get to yes because we didn't have it written down as, as a policy. And now if we have it written down as a policy, it'll still be difficult to get there, but perhaps it'll be just a tad easier. You know, because it, it's a stated policy that as a community, we value, these are our street values, you know what I mean? And, and, and so I, hopefully, you know, some people will say, oh, it'll make it a lot easier. Um, I don't think it'll make it a lot easier, but if it can make it, you know, thirty percent easier, you know, that's, you know, hours and hours of testimony and hours and hours of staff time.
All right, um, Alder Foster, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say something similar to, to Tom, and that I think in some ways this is, you know, our, I think all of our important projects in the last couple of years, um, staff is, and staff, the Transportation Commission, the public have all been really supportive and kind of pushing to do this kind of work. But as Tom said, it's sort of, you gotta work hard to kind of get there, and to me, complete streets is gonna help us have that be the starting point for future designs, and then, you know, still obviously For future designs, and then, you know, still obviously looking at specific conditions and and negotiating certain factors, but. Kind of starting with the place that I think we've gotten to after a lot of um, work. Um, and then specifically for Old Brick, I just wanted to mention since um, you asked Alder Paulson, in terms of the green side of it, it's a little bit odd, because it's. The the path networks are gonna be sort of in the park, which is already green, but there will be um, a lot of medians. Um, and Old Brick Botanical Gardens is gonna be um, uh, kind of managing a good amount of the green space in the the avenue itself. Um, so really having a lot of green plantings, um, you know, native stormwater, um, et cetera. So it it should actually be a a very green um, street once it's done.
All right, thank you, Alder Foster. Are there any further questions, comments, or discussion? Alder Figueroa called, go ahead, please.
Thank you. So will this process also tackle the ratio between family units and parking? On new developments in general?
Yeah, so I think, you know, what we really want to look at with the parking is, there is a big difference um, between multifamily. And single occupant homes, and as Tom mentioned, you know, the single occupant homes typically have. Space at least for four cars. So we want to, in develops developments, make sure that we're reflecting. That that there is a difference between different types of development and that we're not sort of building one size fits all. Um, knowing that then we have roadway issues that come from the fact that the needs are very different.
Well, I mean, I haven't had a lot of development projects, but it seems like in the few that I have been involved on, that. That is used as the, when you say the lower, you know, the care to. To please people, to just create all these parkings and these gigantic structures for really no reason, because at the end of the day, people still. Not happy with, you know, with what is coming. So um. Yeah, I mean, I heard I heard something about making even using um, some subsidy subsidizing metro somehow or whatever, but I think. Whatever you guys come up with, if we put it on writing, definitely will help the developer guide their projects in a way that is. Um, more environmentally friendly. Thank you.
Right, Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had kind of two. Sort of process questions that are kind of related. Um, at one point, I think we saw a map of of. Assigning some streets to different uh, different classes. Um, and I don't remember, I think that was kind of a pitch as it's preliminary and kind of guesses, and then in some places we're not quite sure yet. Are we gonna go through and actually, like, um, assign every street, uh, uh, one of the eleven uh, categories uh, for it? Uh, and and then also on the overlay districts, have we actually figured out? Where exactly the overlay districts are gonna go and 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 what's the process for that? Is that coming to here? Is that going to Transportation Committee? Is that? Gonna be staff led, uh, plan? How is, are we thinking on that?
Sure. So um, for the street types, I think um, we're gonna have like an initial map, but the idea is that. Um, through area plan updates, those will get changed um, as they dig into it, and I think. Um, you know, the planning department has started to really think about those eleven street types now. Um, and as this moves forward, you'll start to see that in their area plans, and those will get updated. But I think, um, you know, at the project level, there'll be an opportunity to look at the street type designation. Um, and decide with a project if it feels like there should be a change to that. Um, and for that to come to the Transportation Commission with the project. Um, I don't think, you know, for every neighborhood street, we would say, oh, this should be a yield street or regular street, but the larger. Um, urban avenues, boulevards, parkways, community connectors, sort of the arterials and collectors would have an initial starting point. Um, that would then get updated over time as plans and as projects come forward to ensure that they are still. The right fit for the context that the city wants to see in that location. Um, for the other overlay maps, I think, you know, the transit one is the easiest one. Every time there's a transit. Network update, that map would be updated to reflect where that that service is, um, that fifteen minute midday midweek service. Um, and then with the the bike map, the idea is we have asked for some funding. Um, and to do a much more thorough review. Um, so we would start with an interim map that then could get approved, a final map approved by the Transportation Commission. Um, to keep this moving forward, but to also do a thorough review and engagement to ensure that we have the right streets um, for our our bike network. And then I think for the green infrastructure, I know that there will, you know, they're talking about doing. New, some new tree studies in the future and some things like that that would also update that process going forward. Think, did that answer your question, Alder Paulson?
It it did mostly, um, you know, I think one of the big things I heard in there was, um, you know, as the area plans get updated, that's a. A good time to review that, and um, the, for folks who maybe aren't on. Aren't as plugged in on the planning side of it, you know, we're switching to this new ten-year cycle of reviewing. All the area plans, um, and we're just gonna kick that off here in the next couple of months, the first cycle. So we'll go eventually. By the, by the end of the decade, have. Gone through basically every part of Madison and updated all of its plans, so we'll have looked at like basically, I guess, every street. Um, the one thing you mentioned, and. Um, occasionally your plan commission looks at, you know, street layouts, um, and you know, sort of thing of future plans, and I can't remember if those come back to. TPPB, or if they come to, maybe they go to transit uh, as well, but if anyone does review that uh, besides the Plan Commission. Um, and if that's gonna be something new that we do, is that adding basically another stop to some development proposals um, in the approval process?
So I think what you're referring to, but others who are on the Transportation Commission can maybe jump in. I think those are going to Transportation. Commission, many of them. I see ones that appear to be that at Transportation Commission. Am I right, Chris? Yeah. So those are already there, so they would continue to be reviewed there.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a new.
Yes, and saying that is what those are. Yes, I'm like, that's what they seem like to me.
Okay, just making, just making sure, so.
Yeah, so not an extra step. Yep, that's already happening.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, uh, any further questions, comments, discussion? Um, just real quick, um, without objection, to let Anne Kovach, Chair of TC, join in. Seeing none, go ahead, Anne.
Can I just make a um, a brief comment and follow up on something that Chris said earlier, and that's as much detail. As you can give in this plan for the Transportation Commission, the better, because as Tom said. You know, we deal with this all the time. You know, we try and follow the plan, but, you know, it's not there to physically say, here it is. You know, this is what it says. So. Um, this is great, Renee. I really appreciate everything that's been done, and I think this is gonna really help us move forward and be able to say, no, this, you know. Pedestrians and bikes are definitely ahead of cars and parking. You can, you can see it clearly on the modal hierarchy. We don't have as much issue with transit, but we do with pedestrian and biking. So. Uh, what you're doing is really appreciated, and TC can't wait. So. Thanks so much, and thanks for letting me say that.
Well, thank you, Anne. Appreciate you being here, too. Um, all right, uh. Another call for questions, comments, discussion before we move on. All right, so we'll be seeing this again next month for its final run-through. Thank you, Renee.
Yep, thanks, everyone.
All right, our next item is Legistar seven, four, five, eight, one, uh, passenger rail introduction.
And that'll be me. I'm gonna share my screen. Can everyone see that?
Yep, looks good.
Very good. All right, thank you so much. I think you all know me. I'm Phil Gritzmacher. I'm a transportation planner with the Department of Transportation. I'm gonna speak with you a little bit today about our passenger rail station identification study. And uh, we're gonna start out with the history, and that's one of the reasons it's fun to have this picture right here showing a train uh, going over the Harrison Street via Doc. All right, there we go. Uh, so we'll go over the the history of rail in Madison, some recent studies, and uh, what we're currently up to. So Madison has a rich history of passenger rail service. The first service was established in the mid eighteen hundreds on the west side. And after the Monona Bay Line uh, was constructed across the Monona Bay, uh, we had an east side train depot that was that was constructed. This, the picture is actually on East Wilson Street, uh, looking uh, up towards the uh, the State Office Building at One Wilson Street. And this is a station that we had before nineteen ten. And this is the one that we have uh, that that we had after nineteen ten. This might look very familiar. Uh, if you are familiar with the MGE, MG&E building at the Hairball Interchange, uh, the lovingly called Hairball Interchange, it's right. Right here, that building still exists. It's not used for anything customer facing right now, but it is a a on the. Uh, it's a historical building. It's a a listed building. Um, and that was where we had train service until nineteen seventy-one, uh, when it was discontinued. And basically, since then, we've been talking about bringing service back. So there's a long list of of Wisconsin-related passenger rail studies. Going back to nineteen ninety-one here that have investigated passenger rail uh, in the mid, greater Midwestern area and how it interfaces with Madison. And locally, we've uh, investigated quite a bit ourselves as well, uh, whether at the RPC, the city, the county. And uh, at the uh, with with joint efforts between the city, county, and WISTAT. We've been studying bringing rail back in some uh, way, shape, or form for a number of years. Uh, so the D uh. At the RPC level, we looked at, we looked at potential right where light rail connections as well as commuter rail connections. And then in the joint effort between WISTAT, the county, and the city, uh, we we looked at uh, uh, more light rail options as well. And then moving to twenty-ten, uh, we we had the Milwaukee-Madison Passenger Rail Corridor Study. Investigating alternative station locations for high-speed rail. Which brings us to our current efforts. Uh, we can build upon some of these efforts with what we're looking at right now. The reason that we're looking at this with our current effort is the bipartisan infrastructure law, which has injected a real, a record number of. Uh, dollars into passenger rail nationally. Um, right now, Amtrak is sitting with sixty-six billion dollars to expand service. Uh, and currently at a budget of of approximately two billion. So it's it's a. A ton of money that's available for passenger rail. Now, a lot of this money is allocated to existing service or state of good repair. But there's a lot that we could tap into as well, ourselves. So about forty-two billion of that is allocated elsewhere. Um, but then there's other funding that's available. Um, uh, to us as well, and then there's some uh, just general rail funding. So there's a lot of different alternatives for us. And with all of these opportunities available because of the bipartisan infrastructure law, the time is right to 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 strike and start planning for some of this. But it's not just the funding. We also have a a few studies that came out. Uh, last year that recommended passenger rail service in Madison. Amtrak's Connect Us Plan. Uh, went through and identified uh, that one of the, one of the, the rail services that should be um. Uh, should be created is an extension of the Hiawatha, the existing Hiawatha connecting Chicago. To Milwaukee. It should be extended to Madison with four trips uh, in the near term, and in the long term. Uh, three trips from Madison should be extended to the Twin Cities. And that was also supported by the Federal Rail Administration's Midwest Regional Rail Plan, which actually saw. That uh, Chicago to Milwaukee, but the the Chicago to. Twin Cities uh, leg is really the core of Midwest service, and it's only really viable if it stops in Madison. And one of the reasons is. Uh, our links that we currently have to Chicago are some of the busiest with our with our bus service. So. Um, we have the support financially. We've got the the plans that are there, uh, so the time is right to strike. So focusing on uh, Amtrak Connect Us. They're talking about extending the Hiawatha service to Madison, and that's one of the most successful rail services in the country. So that could be done in the near term. It wouldn't need uh, that much uh, in terms of improvements to make that a possibility. So that's something that we're really uh, digging into right now. And we're working uh, in a number of different ways to try to bring the service here. Uh, first of all, we formed a coalition to support uh, entering into the corridor ID program, which I'll get into in just a moment. We've had conversations with our congressional delegations, and we've issued an RFP and selected a firm for the Passenger Rail Station Identification Study. Um, we've executed the contract, and we're gonna be having a kickoff meeting uh, next month, and I'll give the specific information about that in just a moment. And this is gonna be a quick hitter of a study. Um, a lot of this work has already been done, so it's refreshing documents and. Uh, making sure that for what's being proposed, it works. So we're hoping to have this completed by May of next year. Um, and we're also beginning to have that coordination and uh, with with our with our partners that would would assist us with this. So looking back to June, we actually have formed a coalition uh, with Watertown and Peewaki, two other. Communities that would be served by a potential Hiawatha extension. Um, and uh, issued a letter requesting entrance into the Corridor ID Program, which is the first step to get in that program, and. What the Corridor ID Program is, is it's a, it's a program uh, that provides federal funding for project planning and development. Which would lead to eligibility for implementation funding from the federal government. So it's, it's all the environmental work, all of that planning that would go into it. This is the first step, asking uh, for entrance into that program, and we expect that the Notice of Funding uh, Opportunity is gonna come out next month. So that would be something that we would, we would strike and uh, and and uh, uh, apply for. And uh, the station identification is a core part of that, because it's a way to demonstrate a local commitment to this effort. So we're currently working with HNTB, and in the previous map, you might have noticed that we had all of our uh, for Transport Twenty-Twenty, there were all of those partners. Uh, that worked on it, and HNTB was actually the consultant assisting with that effort. So they're assisting with this one as well. They have a a ton of experience and history uh, working on passenger rail in Wisconsin and locally here in Madison as well, so we're excited to have them on board. Uh, they're currently reviewing previous plans and uh, prepping for an engagement meeting, a series of engagement meetings that we would have. Uh, we're gonna have meetings next month on December seventh, both in person and virtually. The in-person meeting would be uh, at four-thirty at the Municipal Building in Room Two-Fifteen. Virtual meeting, which would be very similar, would come uh, just after that at six-thirty. And Amtrak is gonna be there, and they're gonna talk about Connect Us, and uh, it it's gonna be a a a nice introduction to what we're doing. Um, and if you look at the map on the right-hand side, what we're looking at is uh, kind of swathy areas. Where we uh, where there could be a potential for a station, and that's uh, that's what they're investigating. That's what they're gonna be investigating. And narrowing it down to that specific uh, station with this study. So uh, that's all that I have, but if you, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. Um, it's a, it's a very exciting time to. To plan for this sort of thing in Madison.
Thank you, Philip. Um, any questions? Alder Figueroa called, go ahead, please. Alder, you're still muted.
I know, I'm trying to, the screen is bouncing around, trying to get to them, but. You can hear Alder Furman screaming at me, but I'm here. Um, um. Yes, exciting, exciting indeed. That is something that I'm so very much looking forward to it, but. I can't help it to, you know, have this burning question. Is is part of the process to have some kind of analysis on how to make this affordable? To. People that may not, you know, be able to afford the Amtrak rates?
The 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 current study is only looking at the location, the the feasible locations for a station. So there are a number of factors that go into that, such as, you know, the turning rate I had the track and the. The amount of distance that we have and our ability to purchase property, but. That's not really a part of this particular study. Uh, that would likely come as a part of the. If we were accepted into Corridor ID, that would be a component of that. As we look at service development.
Right, thank you.
Go ahead, Tom, if you wanna jump in quick.
Yeah, actually, um. That, um, that question was actually asked at a, another meeting I was at, and every state has. Their own formula for how much they. Contribute towards passenger rail service, and then the remainder is made up in fares. And so different states have actually. They actually will, the state itself will contribute more towards the passenger rail, and so the fares are a little bit less expensive. So in some ways, that's a policy issue at the um. At the um, state level. Um, Amtrak has to. Uh, how do I put it? They they have to, you know, their revenue has to meet, match their expenses, and so they're kind of tied, and and so um. Other states that have lower fares, uh, it's because the the state contributes a little bit more than what Wisconsin does, and so that's a. Uh, I think that's a legitimate point, but it's a. That's kind of where that question lies.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Alder Paulson, go ahead, please.
Um, yeah. Does Columbus sort of get, um. Hmm, trying to think of the polite term. Does Columbus sort of lose out? Um, uh, uh, in this, in this new. Hmm, trying to think of the polite term, does Columbus sort of lose out um, uh, uh, in this, in this new plan here? And I guess it's not really our problem, but um, I'm just a little curious kind of what the plan might be from Amtrak. Um, if, because Madison, if Madison is crucial to add this, and they're going to reroute a lot of the trips through it. I'm sort of assuming it's gonna, looks like the rail lines kind of do this, come into Madison, a loop at First Street, and then um, bounce out and head north of the um, out past the airport and and reconnect that away. And I remember in twenty-ten, there was you know, to get to Milwaukee, it was kind of going to be this pain if you come downtown, and then you got to put the train in backward, in reverse and work your way out that way, um, whereas it always struck me, you know, this this way seems like if it's going to go that way, it's going to do the loop and and zoom on out. So, but does that kind of blow up Columbus, and is that any concern to to us and or more importantly, to Amtrak, who might say, well, we're now we're, you know, we're going to preserve this existing service? And so sorry, Madison, you're just a little too far out there, because the rail spurts just don't work.
Those are, those are different services. Um, so ours would be a daily service, and that that's uh, the the Empire Builder that's going to Columbus right now. So they're different services. Uh, it's hard to say what they would do in the future. Uh, I I don't think that right now we could, we could tell you either way, um, but right now, the service that we would be looking at would be entirely separate from what exists in Columbus right now. So ours would be an extension of the existing Hiawatha going between Chicago and Milwaukee. So we would certainly want to preserve our ability, and this is going to be a big part of the station identification is. Though the, the portion of the service going to the Twin Cities. I I I couldn't tell you when that would begin. We want to make sure that wherever we're setting our station, wouldn't make it impossible to have that service in the future. Um, and if that were to happen, it's hard to say what would happen to other services in the area, but we, yeah, that's not, that hasn't been discussed right now, either uh, with staff internally or with Amtrak, so.
Okay, stay tuned.
Currently, Amtrak has a a bus extension to Madison, so perhaps they would reverse it. Although I imagine that most of the traffic going through Columbus from the area is from Madison, but I don't know for sure, anyway. Any further questions? Comments, discussions? Certainly exciting, although we, as many of you know, we've been here before. A few times. Hopefully this time it works out. All right, uh, seeing none, thank you, Philip. Uh, that's all we have for the evening, so I would for a motion to adjourn, please.
Move adjournment.
Thank you, Alder Fermin, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alder Foster, thank you. All those in favor during the meeting for this evening, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Appears to be unanimous for adjourned, thank you, everyone, have a good week.
Night.